Tonight's forecast update, clear with a low of seventy-one ninety-eight on Friday, Saturday, a high of ninety-four, and a small chance of rain on Sunday. On your side, WBRC First Alert Chief Meteorologist JP Dice.
Do you watch free TV with an antenna? Are some of your local channels missing? Find them again by rescanning your TV using your remote. Not sure how? Learn more at fcc.gov/tvrescan. In our podcast, Hush Money, we're going to get you talking. We debate the uncomfortable questions about money and life. And it's what we just joined us to decide who's right. There's no such thing as strings free money. There are some archaic laws right now that it's traditions that men should pay when they'll do the reach, the pay the reach. You know, money is one of those things that...
Hey buddy.
Hey buddy, you back at work?
I'm headed to Coleman to grab some pants and clothes because I'm out of clothes and I'm headed to work then.
You headed where?
Headed to Coleman to get some pants. And then I'm...
You headed to Coleman?
I'm going up there to that Jack's Wear.
I got you. Get some clothes?
Yeah. I seen pants in there when I was buying boots I liked. I should have bought them then. You, uh, what about you? You made it back yet?
No, I just don't trust you.
Oh, hell, I got you. I talked to Tara and I got her about convinced to rent something instead of buy something since there ain't nothing out there right now. I told her them houses at Hudson Avenue were gonna be shit.
Yes, niggers are stalling them together.
Yep. I told her they were gonna be shit. So, I think she's gonna do that. But, uh, she didn't show me the messages. She was in a hurry, but she was pretty adamant that Dustin did send her that message.
Yeah.
I'll get, I'll get her to show it to me. It just wasn't the right time or place.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I know. You had to wait the right time.
Yeah, but she was pretty adamant Dustin sent her that. And I'll tell you something else I picked up on. She talked about not having lawyers draw this up and letting Nick's secretary, Tanya, draft it up since she used to be a paralegal. I didn't know she used to be a paralegal.
No, she used to be a paralegal. That's right.
Six thirty-three, ten forty-two.
Crazy, huh?
That means he's tied up in the whole shit.
Yep. For Tanya to do that.
You know he is.
Yep.
That's a damn guarantee he's tied up in it. He's not gonna hurt it.
Yep. It's all right. I'm not gonna say nothing. I'm gonna stay quiet about it. I'm gonna stay quiet and let it work its way out. But, yeah. Said that, uh, Tanya would draft it up and do it. And on top of it, Bobby Smith flagged me down, which is the eighteen-wheeler driver that Nick went bush hog for the other day. And, uh, he didn't say nothing, but I could tell that he knows, which means Nick told him when they were up there bush hogging.
Really?
Yeah, he kept saying, "Man, you doing okay?" I said, "Yeah, I'm fine. Why?" He said, "I was just making sure he's doing okay." He said, "If you need me, just call me." He said, "I love you like a brother. I'm telling you, if you need me, call me." I could just tell. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like he was concerned. He had concern.
Yep. Well, Nick needs to keep his fucking mouth shut.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you, Nick has spearheaded this whole deal just between you and me.
Well, I ain't even think that, but I'm telling you, even, hell, even the screw-ups I see now happening, falling back on him.
Yep. I'm telling you, man. Tanya to, uh, draft it up? Are you kidding me?
Yeah, that's a fucking slam to the face. I told his ass to stay out of it.
Eight alpha Juliet five one six nine, eight alpha Juliet five one six...
I'm telling you, when she said that, I didn't say nothing. I said, "Okay, whatever you want to..."
Yeah. Yep. What are you gonna do? I'd say, "What are you gonna do, honey? I just wanna make you happy."
Yeah.
I'd do it every time.
Yeah. But, I mean, she was laughing and all that when we were at the house. She tried to be mad at first and then I got her laughing, so it's nothing, it's not that big of a deal. I just need to let it play out for a second.
Yeah. You're an extra go away.
To work?
Yeah, just running for me. You gotta rob me up to Coleman.
Well, I gotta be at work at seven. And she hadn't picked Ivy Lee up and it was five o'clock. She gotta pick Ivy Lee up by five-thirty. So, I'll run to Coleman before and then head down to work.
I got you.
Ain't that some shit, though?
Yeah.
I never thought he'd turn like that.
Well, yeah, I still don't wanna believe that, but, man, I'm telling you the shit that I'm hearing. That's his ass right there. What really got me, though, I just been on some heat when he said, you know, "You told everything." And I said, "Well, I did go as far as saying you can throw me under the bus, Dick." Because y'all been friends for years. That's all I said. But that has told you that I know his fucking ass done it?
Yeah. Yeah, but he's so, he legitimately, Dean, is so fucking ignorant that he believes his own lie. Like, he thinks he can sell his own lie to you.
Yeah. Now, you're right about that. He really thinks he's got that good.
He really does. I'm telling you, he really, really does.
He got, he caught that shit about the circle, though.
Yeah. Yep. But I'm, I'm...
He didn't catch it.
I'm telling you, though, man. He had a chance to come clean and own all of it, and all he would own is I slipped up and said yes to one question. Which I know for a fact, oh, there's things that only he knew about the situation, nobody else.
I know it. I know it. And he's gotta know it, don't he?
No, he don't think like that, man. Think about all the times you try to lead him to stuff and be like, "Man, you gotta think about how this plays out." And he's like, "You think so? Like, motherfucker, it's written on the wall."
Yeah, like that day I told him we stayed that night and go over what to, if the judge said this, you say this, you know?
Yes.
He's on his fucking own now, buddy.
He is with me, man. Just, I mean, I'm not gonna tell him that, but...
I'm not gonna tell him either, but you wait and see.
I'm telling you...
What's be gained in his side?
What do you think he's done? You think he's just gotten too big for his own britches?
I don't know, but I told his ass to stay out of here. You and Tara shit. Don't be getting in, I don't want to hurt anymore. Because, oh, you know, I knew you started this shit up, so I just told him to stay his ass away. Oh, I am, I am. Then he goes to the damn fair with her last night.
Uh-huh. And then from the fair, he left, she left and came straight to Warrior to see if she could find that car.
Yeah. And I don't know, man, I don't market.
He's got something on his mind, I'm telling you. He's got something on his mind. I'm telling you. And I've been saying it for the last couple of weeks. Every time I get a step forward, he takes me back a step.
Yeah, but I tell you what, everything he knew, I'm making damn sure that wasn't in the places that he knew of anymore.
It's not, and she alluded to something about that one day, too, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, it ain't there. I'm telling you, it's already gone. As soon as I got back, I handled all that.
Yeah.
It's not even, it's not even at my house.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't either, man.
I, I'm telling you, man, I, I ain't never in my life seen anything like it.
It blows my mind.
I'm telling you right now, man, you about the only one I trust. You and Petey.
Don't tell me no shit.
Oh, trust me, I'm not gonna put, it was a damn lesson learned to me not to put, put that on somebody. You know what I mean?
Yeah. I've heard too, and you ain't the only one.
I would never, again, if I had to do over again, I would have never said a word to anybody. I would have just went and handled business. But, you know, looking back on it, he picked me about that two days before asking me questions. And I knew when we got down there, I couldn't call, you know, cover that up.
Right. Shit, man, I ain't sure he didn't put something in that truck, tell her everything.
Like you said, why'd he go back both them nights?
Yep.
Then after we all left, he stayed down there till three o'clock in the morning at the bar by himself?
Yeah. He goes from not partying to partying. What the fuck?
By himself?
Yeah. Yeah. I knew something was up there when he left. I didn't lie to him.
His wife's so stupid, she wouldn't ever believe anything, you know?
Oh, no, she knows. I told you what she's got.
Uh-huh.
I'm telling you, there ain't nothing there.
She literally is nothing but a body that exists, if you think about it.
Yes. Bless her heart.
I know. I know.
Bless her heart.
But she thinks, she's like Nick, she thinks she's smarter than everybody else.
Yeah, she does, yeah. Yep. And Nick likes fucking her because she likes it.
Yep. Yep. I'm telling you...
And both of them, like you said, were doing threesome. It wasn't bothering him.
Man, I'm telling you, I've done them, but I wouldn't ever do it with my girlfriend or wife. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah.
You don't fucking do that. And if you do, you never get over it. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, you don't never forget it.
No, they will never forget that shit. They will never forget that shit.
That's why you can't do it. Like you said, a woman can't do it. And they get, they, they're emotionally tied.
Uh-huh. You're up. I'm telling you, man, I've never in my life seen somebody like Nick turn like that.
Well, something turned him. I tell you, the only thing turns me is just...
Uh-huh.
Turn him and just walk away from him.
He's got it on his mind, I'm telling you.
Yeah. I agree with you. I usually wouldn't agree with you on that, but I definitely had to agree with this. Shit's been saying it's had to come from him.
And he won't own none of it. That's the key.
No, I know it. She's gonna eventually tell you. She'll eventually tell you everything.
Oh, she's already told me it came from him.
Has she?
Told me, and don't repeat none of this, but she told me that he broke down and was on the verge of crying. That sounds like pity to me.
Yeah.
How would you take that? Would you not take that as, uh, he's trying to play pity by playing on her emotions if he almost broke down and started crying when he told her?
Yep.
I'm telling you, every time I get a leg up, he comes back in and knocks it back down.
Yeah. What gets me is she don't say that.
Nope. He gets her all stirred. But, see, I play everything back. Every time she brings something up with Macon, I say, "What, what about you and Nick? Have you and Nick not done that?" Well, that's different. That's different. That's your friend. I said, "Friends don't dime friends out, so you don't use friend on me."
Yeah. Yeah, you let her know real quick, didn't you?
Yeah. Hell, yeah. I give it right back. I'm telling you, man, I ain't never seen nothing like it. I really haven't.
What gets me, though, is she's ever calling me back for no information.
Which tells me, honestly, Dean, if you wanna know the truth, what I think about that situation? Nick said, "Call Dean and ask him these questions, and then we're gonna put it off on Dean." I'm telling you. My gut feeling tells me that.
Yeah, 'cause he knew I wasn't gonna lie.
Yep. Yep. He said, "Call Dean and ask his questions."
I have to be pressured, but I'm pressured, I can't lie. I really can't.
Yeah, but he gave, he gave you, he was giving you the scapegoat. He was making you the scapegoat for him to say face.
That's right, yeah.
'Cause Tara told me that he begged her not to say it came from him.
Yeah.
See, he...
That flipped him out when she called him back and said, or when he found out that I said it was within the circle.
Yeah. Yep.
Remember? That's when he turned around and called me. "What the hell? How you mean it's within the circle? I ain't said nothing." I said, "I didn't say it was you, Nick. I just said it was in the circle with people was around us that night. Somebody broke."
So, he's even trying to act like he was telling you it wasn't him?
Oh, he, the whole time, he's trying to act like it was me, you know?
Really?
Yep. No, I won't forget it. I will never forget it. And that's what was ra, that's exactly the reason I knew you had, can't tell when I told Tara, I said, "Yeah, but that woman was with Petey. I can't tell you what happened. I don't know. I don't know. She said we did have sex." I said, "I, I don't know. I can't answer that. I truly can't answer that. I don't mean you was watching them having sex. I said, "I'm sorry, but I can't give you the information. I don't know."
Right. She didn't like that?
She wanted me to say I was having sex.
Well, see, the, the first day...
And that's when I told her, I said, "You just need to tell Lee. You need to sit down and talk to Lee and don't go crazy. And just tell him that I told him under the bus." I said, "'Cause him and Nick's been, and she knew that I knew Nick said it. You know what I mean?"
Oh, she did?
Yeah, I said, "Him and Nick's been friends for years." I said, "Our relationship don't mean nothing." I said, "There's still this, this just told me under the bus." And her words out of her mouth, she says, "No, I won't do that."
Yeah. Well, she threw you under the bus a third sentence, which tells me...
That's what, that's what you told me when you first talked to me. I said, "Buddy, you write it on me. Third word out of her, out of her mouth, I said, "I told her."
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that's what I said. I said, "Use me. I did, I did. I said, "I remember that."
Well, and you start thinking about it, too. I'm telling you, Nick had her call you to pick you for information so that Nick was thinking that he could spin it off on you.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, I said...
Well, he still, I'm telling you, he still spinning it on me. That's one of her conversations with us the other day, and he said, "You just told her, you just basically backed up everything that's ever said." He said, "You told her?"
Right.
Now, let me tell her, I said, "That woman knew information that nobody knew."
He didn't wanna hear that, did he?
Somebody, no, that's when I said, "It was within the circle, man. No, that's the only way it could be. It was within our circle. Somebody blew it up top."
Yep. You're up.
He didn't like that 'cause his dream, that's gonna pin back, pin point right back to him.
That was his whole game, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's why he called me two, three times. "What do you mean within the circle?" That's what he kept saying. "What do you mean within the circle?"
Between me and you, man, he's turned out to be a piece of shit in my book.
I, I don't know what happened, but if, I'm telling you right now, I'm like Petey on this part. If he ain't fucking her and you don't believe he is, he's show them down wanting to.
Yep. Yep. You are a hundred percent right. A hundred percent right. It's all good, man. It'll work its way out in time. I mean, I, just between...
Yeah, well...
Between me and you, I mean, I'll be, I'll remain friends with him. Well, he's gone to acquaintance now, not friends, but, you know, he won't ever know any different. And I'll let him hang his stuff.
Yeah, but, that's why you have to do it, man. I mean, it's, you do it, cut it, cut it.
Do what? Now I lost you.
You know, we, we all used to talk every day, man, two, three times a day.
Uh-huh.
I don't get a fucking phone call from him.
You don't?
No.
You think he's calling Mike now all the time?
I don't know. It's just like today. He called me to ask me how my week went with it down there.
Really?
He called me? No. I damn, I damn sure won't be calling him anymore. 'Cause I told his ass to stay out of that relationship.
Don't do it on my behalf. I'm just telling you, he's, he's, I'm telling you, he's angling on something. I'm telling you, the boy thinks he's smarter than everybody else. He truly does.
Oh, yeah, back to life, rest of the flat, it's one oh two five, all Birmingham, summer one for new country, there's barely coming up, we'll look calls, and of course, next Tuesday night, we have another free concert for you. We're rolling into two months of free shows, really, seven weeks of free shows, I guess, if you get technical. The Tin Roof Downtown Birmingham, incredible Tuesday night, powered by Ferris Rally and Past. Just a couple nights ago, we had Cole Ford kicking off for us. What a great show, just two nights ago. And the next Tuesday, Convest, brand new store, featuring Colby Calais, a free show starting as well at Central Park. This report is paid for by the FCC. Heading home on the Red Mountain Expressway, traffic is in good shape right now. Traffic's moving along pretty good as well. Highway two eighty down to one nineteen. No big delays right now on Port John track, looking a lot better. Sixty-five through Homewood Hoover down through Shelby County, a little slow around on Pala Master. No big delays on I twenty out through Lees or fifty-nine up toward Friesburg. Center by Captain Carle, Bullseye traffic on one oh two five, good night. Do you watch free TV with an antenna? Are some of your local channels missing? Find them again by rescanning your TV using your remote. Not sure how? Learn more at fcc.gov/tvrescan. Football season is back, and again, this year, the South.
Man, I don't know if it's me or you.
No, I'm coming through Clay Farmville.
Okay, so does you.
That road, yeah. No, I'm, I'm doing exactly what you're doing.
Yep. I know exactly what you're saying. I'm just telling you, man. You think so? Well, he's the type that, he's the type that's gotta run ideas by somebody all the time. So, if I was a betting guy, I would say he's talking to Mike all the time. And it's like what Sheila said, if anybody was to cheat, it'd be Nick, not you. Which tells me that there's some jealousy there, that I'm doing what Nick would love to do. You think so, too? Oh, hell, I don't know about that, but I'm telling you right now. Man, I don't know. I don't know, but he, I'm telling you, man, he would love to get away with some shit like that, you know? Are you? That's, that's exactly right. I'm telling you, man, I've, between me and, between me and you, I've, I've got like a handful of them on my Snapchat now. I kind of just got something stolen. They got into it last night and all that, man. I'm telling you, that was bad for them to get into it like that. You know what I'm saying?
One thirty, go ahead.
Do what?
If you were to go ahead and notify H and S Garage.
Yeah. Tara pulled up, cornered her up, they started arguing in the dang bank parking lot. Got into an argument, and they got into an argument at the Shamrock when they left and all that. Macon apparently looked at Tara and goes, "I'm not fucking your husband like you think I am." Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yep. She's like, "What, Tara? What, Tara? What is it?" And then she's like, "And you're out here doing this stupid shit with Ivy Lee in the car?" She goes, "Mom of the year, way to go. Mom of the year, way to go." Oh, she, Macon's pretty damn good, I'll be honest with you. Just between me and you, that's why I really don't, I do my thing with her, and outside of that, that's it, because you can't trust somebody that's as good as you are. You know what I mean? She's as good as I am, I'm telling you. But I got that bitch today, though. God, I got her. I got her fucking good, too. You wanna hear about it? So, she had this guy break up with her about a year ago, and, uh, they were together over a year and a half, and it truly broke her heart. She never, that's why she ain't dated nobody since. She never got over it. And she's told me all about it. Ain't no big deal. Ain't no big deal. It's just normal life stuff, you know? Well, I know of the guy, and guess who? Can you hear me? Guess who, uh, I know of the guy, and guess who, uh... Shit. I meant to my damn ATM. I don't, Tara looking at my transactions on my banking accounts. Oh. Guess who walked in the gym and was doing back like I was while I was on the phone with her? 'Cause, see, Nick gets her all pissed off and fired up again. I'm telling you, that's what the deal is. But I'm telling you, I don't really think she would sleep with Nick. I don't think she'll sleep with Nick. Nick ain't her type. I'm telling you, man. Women do not like Nick. I'm telling you, he runs them off. Hey, Jeff Hilton's calling me twice. I'll call you back. What up, man? Well, hell, I call you back. Man, I'm always doing something, but hell, I call you back every time. What you doing? All right. Well, it wasn't me, but I'll take the heat for you. Who, Clay? Yeah, it wasn't me. He had it all wrong. He wasn't gonna take mine, 'cause it wasn't me.
Two oh one twenty-three, eight oh twenty-three.